Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is a Sheltie Collie mix. He's in Cage Eight and is eligible for adoption on Tuesday, June 28th. And he wonders who all these crazy people are. Oh, kissing your toes. Isn't he? He's beautiful. Come on over here so they can see your face. You don't want to talk to those guys. They don't want you. They don't want you. Maybe I should, you could go walking with me. Isn't he pretty? It's a beautiful dog, nice red color. We had a neighbor dog, I forget what breed it was, but it was this color, beautiful dog. It went swimming, and our swim pool much to my chagrin. So anyway, this dog is available as of Tuesday, June 28th. Make a nice pat. And I understand, and I want to apologize to our video audience, that we had a problem last week. There was no video. But the dog got adopted anyway. So, we're batting a thousand, correct, Commissioners?
Yes, we are.
So, that's our, come on. And he doesn't have a name. Look at how nice he's sitting. Oh. He wants to be a nutritioner.
I can't tell because of the bush in my way.
That's our show for today. Well, they could just come. Mr. Cortez wants me to tell you the hours. The kennel's open. See, it should be open all the same time, so then I won't have to go through this. But the kennel hours are Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 10:00 to 6:00, Thursday and Friday, 10:00 to 4:30, and Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. We are closed on Sunday and Monday. Remember, he's available Tuesday, June 28th. Y'all come. Hal is sharing his card that he got for Father's Day. See, he got a dog too, so you know, you get a nice card if you get a dog. It says, "I love my person. Happy Father's Day from his wife and buddy." He said we could share the card for the meeting. A thought for the day, live so that when they check your footprints in the sand of time, they won't find only the marks of a heel. This is a tribute to Clarence Wills from the American Red Cross, Class of '92. Madam Clerk?
At 10:15, there will be a public hearing on the vacation of 15 feet alley on Elmwood-Rosewood Streets in Illyria Township, Ohio. At 11:00 a.m., Main Street, Illyria, in front of Historic City Hall invites everyone to honor the old post office, St. Andrews Episcopal Church in Historic City Hall, with the presentation of the personalized bronze plaques commemorating their status on the National Register of Historic and Classic Places.
Thank you.
Under Resolutions, Number One, approve the enterprise-owned abatement agreement between the city of Avon, Ohio, and Henkel Consumer Adhesives, Inc., which calls for a minimum of $9,140,000 investment in Avon for a 220,000-square-foot expansion to their facility, purchase of machinery, equipment, furniture, fixtures, and new inventory, and the creation of 40 new full-time jobs. The abatement will be a 75 percent for 10 years.
Rebecca Jones from our Community Development Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Rebecca Jones, Lorain County Community Development Department. We have with us this morning Mayor Jim Smith from Avon and David Alton with Henkel Consumer Adhesives. They are here because they've agreed to enter into a tax abatement, and we are before the Commissioners for their approval this morning. They are asking for a minimum investment of nine, or they're planning to make a minimum investment of $9,140,000. Forty million, four hu, oh, let me start that over again, I'm sorry. 7.3 million will be for a 220,000-square-foot addition to their existing facility. The project should be completed by September 30th, 2006. They will be creating 40 new permanent jobs with a projected payroll of in excess of $1 million, averaging about $27,000 per person. The company currently employs 502 permanent employees, 75 percent abatement for 10 years. The city of Avon has approved the agreement. The schools were properly notified. Mr. Ennis has reviewed and approved the agreement as to form. Community Development Department has reviewed this agreement as well and recommends it for approval. And now I'd like to introduce Mayor Smith of Avon.
Good morning, Mayor. Welcome.
Manco has been a mainstay of our community. They came in approximately nine years ago, and they promised us 250 jobs. We're now at 502 jobs.
Great.
Manco now has our largest building in the city of Avon, which is 10 acres under roof. Now they're going to have another four and a half acres under roof in the city. So we'll have almost 15 acres under roof. They've created jobs within our county. They have been a big contributor of our school system. Every year, they contribute product and money to our school system. Of course, the Duck Tape Festival, they sponsor, they help sponsor that. Show you what happens, you know, we did the abatement. We brought them in years ago. I've watched David Alton, who is now a manager with Manco, has grown up in the city of Avon as a Lorain County resident. They've created many, many jobs in Lorain County. He's a prime example. He goes from living in the city to going to work for them and becoming a manager. So they have been very corporately responsible of many jobs in our county. Our school system, they have brought in numerous dollars when we were in a bind. I was on the school board when we were in a bind to build a new high school. We ran short of money. They contributed $75,000 out of their pocket. A.J. Rose, of course, another one of our corporates, $50,000. They have been very good to our community. They have created the jobs. They say right here they're going to create 40 jobs. I can almost guarantee before the abatement's done with, they'll be in excess of that. They've always been very conservative. They've, like I said, and then we got grants that opened up a whole area of the city of Avon. We got $1.45 million in grants that opened up almost 1,000 acres of land when they came in. So, abatement is not a dirty word in the city. It has shown that it has helped employ more Lorain County people. It's helped the tax base. They've been wonderful to the city. And they're not just competing with other cities, too. Henkel, who had bought them, they have 31 companies over the United States. Manco's section had to compete with the other 31 entities in the company to get this part of the company located in the city of Avon. So we're not just competing against other cities in the area. We're not just competing against other cities in the United States. We're competing against other cities that have, of the same corporation. They have to fight for added uses of their property within their own corporation. So, we put together, between Manco and the city of Avon, put together a good package. They had to take that to Germany. Germany had to decide whether it was feasible to come in Avon or go in Arizona, or Carolinas, or other places where they have their factories. So, we're very happy to have them. And Betty, I thought you brought that dog in here for crowd control at first. When I seen that, I got kind of panicky.
He's too friendly.
Yeah. But anyway, they have been nothing but positive for our community. They've helped us put many other companies in. When they're out at different meetings and stuff, they have sent people back to the city of Avon and Lorain County to look for more places to locate companies. So we're very, very happy to have them. I would hope you would approve the resolution so we can go forward and so we can start building another four and a half acres under roof.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. And we'd just like to comment on the Duck Tape Parade that was happening last weekend. Rebecca Jones's granddaughter was in the parade. Commissioner Kahlo was in the parade. Our Solid Waste Department was represented, and Dan Bellman. So, we liked the parade, too.
So did I. Wish I had their hair, because I got sunburned. And it's just starting to come back to normal now.
We have caps that you could wear.
Well, I didn't want to look like one of the clowns that were, you know, that were dancing around. They had a big top hat for me to wear. I says, "Hey, I says, I'm the mayor. I says, you know, I don't want to look like a clown."
Does Mr. Alton have any comments that he'd like to make?
Sure. He's an Avon boy. You can't shut us up.
I'm going to ask Mr. Alton, as he comes forward, if his great-grandparents might be Jacob and Mary Alton?
Uh, no.
Not really?
No. A relative.
Okay.
The Alton family is kind of a funny story. Big family, and you know, a riff in between, and they're split.
Oh, I don't want to know about that.
I'd like to say good morning, and I'd like to thank Mayor Smith and Avon City Council for helping us through this process and getting us this far. As the mayor mentioned, now that we're a part of Henkel Corporation, a worldwide entity, we are now in competition with our fellow business in North America. You know, it's just a matter of time before a large corporate entity like Henkel looks at its number of facilities throughout North America and says, "Hey, we've got some redundancy here. We need to make sure that this is the right choice for us." So we are most importantly in competition with locations in Pennsylvania, Illinois, Michigan, states where some of these taxes are not evident. So, this abatement is very, very critical to us, and it's very critical to us getting Henkel's approval for this project. And this project, we're, like the mayor said, you know, we've made good on any promises as far as hired personnel. We've got a large piece of land there, and we firmly believe that if we should receive this abatement and Henkel should grant us approval for this project, it will sort of solidify our place as a headquarters. The city of Avon's been great, the county's been great to us, and we really have no desire to leave. So this just sort of furthers our placement in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alton. Questions from the Commissioners? If not, I'll move for approval as outlined.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
And we'll look forward to next year's parade.
Thank you.
Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
There's one item that I'd like to have removed from the transfers. It's a $200 purchase for business cards. Those, I believe, can be taken care of in-house.
I think it said business cards and other items, so...
What were the other items?
I don't think they listed them. It was just to cover expenses.
Did you say one of?
$200 for business cards, maintenance. That one.
The business cards are usually like about $35 for a big box of them. I didn't know what the other expenses were. They just didn't have, they just didn't have money in that line item account for those type of items. So, they asked to transfer money into those accounts.
Well, can we delete the business cards out of this and approve just the $200 for supplies?
Sure.
Because we can do the business cards in-house but downstairs, correct?
Yeah, the business cards, I don't, I didn't see anything on the requisitions for the business cards yet, so...
That's what it says on our reason for request.
I saw that when it came through. Wasn't too thrilled with the way it was worded myself.
Okay. So we can delete that and still approve the transfer, then $200 towards supplies for the end of the year?
So they're requesting $200 be put in that account. We have a lot of sub-accounts. That's required by, I want to say the Orders Office, but I think they're compliant with the Gatsby regulations. So, you have micro-accounts with a couple hundred dollars in them, because they want to be specific on where the money's being spent. So, they may have other spending needs in that account, but once again, you know, that'll come back to you guys for a decision.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner?
Yes.
Leave the notation on there, then?
Did we want to conclude, though, that they were paying $200 for business cards?
No, but that was one of the notations that was made there. Is it clear, then?
Yes.
All right.
Teresa?
Yvonne has.
Yes.
He has those business cards already.
Were they made in-house?
No, they were made from a quick print. I believe they were like $70 for 1,000 or so. But I think he's had them for about a month or so.
Not good use.
Is that the place where we get all our business cards?
That Union bug and stuff that we did that research on.
It's the same place, Commissioners, that I got everybody's business cards. We have not been able to produce a card of what I would say of huge professional quality in-house. So we haven't been making the business cards in-house. I mean, we do a lot of printing in-house, but we weren't satisfied with the final product. If you want us to go back and try to do it again, we can. But we found it to be cost-effective and end up with a better product by purchasing some outside.
I'll just say it was my note that suggested they could be done in-house. So maybe we need to know that it's not cost-effective and that...
They've already been ordered.
After the fact. Yes.
I understand the board's position.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Board of Commissioners?
Commissioners, I have an extensive list of new hires from Job and Family Services that we need to go over. It was prepared yesterday, and I got it this morning, and we have quite a few things to discuss on that issue. We have one grievance issue, which is a bargaining issue that I need to discuss with you. And I also would like to update you on some matters of pending litigation where I have to attend on behalf of the board. I'd like to discuss our position with you. And Jerry, I think you're aware of those issues with Mr. Flanagan. So, we need to do those things today if time permits. Okay? Thank you.
Number 11. Award-gotten food service for various foods items to be supplied to Lorain County Gold Acres and CBCF. Said bids were open on May 23, 2005, and will be effective July 1, 2005, through December 31, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Authorize the release of retainage to Cleveland Cement Contractors in Cleveland in the amount of $117,272 plus interest as the final payment for work performed in Lorain County Justice Center. Said paperwork has been completed and received.
Mr. Cortez, you have comments?
Commissioners, I'm pleased to close this out. We updated you some time ago that we had reached a final conclusion with Cleveland Cement, and we have been compensated for certain delays in the Justice Center that we experienced while this is 2005, so now it's got to be thinking 2002. And I'm comfortable that the county was made as completely as whole as possible by Cleveland Cement. We have deducted what the settlement was and any outstanding issues with them from their retainage, I believe, Mr. Ennis, and this is the final release, and that will close out our chapter with Cleveland Cement.
Thank you. Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve various purchase-of-service agreements with Lorain County Department Job and Family Services effective July 1, 2005, through June 30, 2006. One Lorain County Sheriff deputies to provide security at a total contract value now to exceed $31,500, and these will be various off duties at a cost of $25 per hour. Also, Murray Ridge Production Center, Illyria, for cleaning services at a total contract value now to exceed $3,715.20. This is for two workers, three days per week, at 1.5 hours per day at $8 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Approve and enter into an MOU between Lorain County Department Job and Family Services and Horizon Activity Center for the purpose of defining the roles and responsibilities as it relates to the implementation of the Early Learning Initiative, effective July 1, 2005, through June 30, 2006, and payment of services is made directly to providers from Ohio Department Job and Family Services using Tana funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Approve and enter into an agreement between Lorain County Department Job and Family Services and Talc, the work number, to provide verification of clients' employment and wages before clients can receive services from the agency. This is effective July 1, 2005, through June 30, 2006, at a cost not to exceed $12,600 to be paid from account 205010903450129 Internet services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorain County Children's Services Department to utilize the Shell Oil, Gasoline, and Master Card cards, not to exceed 200 and 2,500 respectively, for the year 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Sanitary Engineer, approve and enter into proposal with K.E. McCartney and Associates, Inc., Mansfield, in the amount of $43,500 to be paid from account 001014901450124 Professional Services for the first phase of the Shaden Road Sanitary Sewer Extension Illyria Township. Issue notice to proceed for Phase 1. For any additional work, will require approval of the county administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Treasurer, instruct the clerk to advertise notice of applications on the Uniform Depository Act from any financial institution legally eligible, which may desire to submit a written application to become a public depository of public funds of Lorain County, as provided by the Uniform Depository Act, Section 135.33 of the Ohio Revised Code. Current contracts will expire on August 22, 2000, that should be 2005.
Okay.
That's when we entered into it. New contracts will be entered into for a period of August 23, 2005, through August 22, 2009. The highest amount of active money which may be deposited at any given time during the contract period will not exceed $120 million. The notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on July 8 and 15. Bids will be open at 2:00 p.m. on July 22, 2005, in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under Old Business, for Workforce Development Agency, rescind Resolution Number 05-505 adopted June 16, 2005, rejecting the bids received on May 2, 2005, for various programs for the WIB Council. Reject eight proposals received on May 2, exceeding the 10% administrative cost, and instruct clerk to re-advertise four proposals for four programs for the WIB Youth Council. One, leadership summits. Two, soft skills and career exploration. Three, summer employment opportunities. And four, tutoring and study skills, dropout prevention and mentoring. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on June 28, July 5, and 12. Pre-proposal conference will be held at WDA on July 13, from 9:30 to noon, and proposals will be open on, this should be July 19, 2005, at 2:00 p.m. in the Back Conference Room.
You're not going to continue on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Approve. You know, I separated it, you know. Approve and enter into various purchase-of-service contracts between WDA and the funding services available through WIB, effective July 1, 2005, through June 30, 2006. One, Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County, in the amount of $190,000 to provide pre-employment and paid work experience to 53 youth. Two, Illyria YWCA, in the amount of $50,000 to provide career exploration internship to 50 youth. And Juvenile Courts, in the amount of $20,000 to provide soft skill and career exploration to 15 to 20 youth.
Now, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to explain, just for clarification, that we did, the beginning of this resolution that we're rescinding last week, we had a SNAFU. Our list indicated that we wanted to reject certain proposals and adopt certain proposals, and with the wording on our resolution, we did conclude that we rejected them all, and that was never our intention at the time. We are streamlining the process at WDA. We are looking keenly at the administrative cost versus the program cost and the direct services provided to customers and consumers of services, especially in the youth area. The second issue is that, I told you last week, I was dissatisfied with whether we were doing bidding and RFPs and how those things had to mingle to the point where nobody really knew what we were doing. We talked to the state, and we also talked to some other counties, and we have reached a conclusion that these are RFPs. We do have the flexibility of negotiating and discussing and modifying those RFPs after the submission of proposals. We're allowed to negotiate terms, conditions, and outcomes with those RFPs. So, we've taken the word "bid" out and not "steal bid." They're RFPs, and we will be moving forward with that. And I'm glad we have this clarification. It makes it much easier for us to deal with these issues going into the future, and I believe that the Purchasing Director will support my conclusion on that, Yvonne. The only last thing I asked was why we had to advertise for three days. And my answer was, the answer that was given to me was that under the federal requirements, we're required to advertise for three days. So, I believe that we are on the road to clarity with these issues. I appreciate the board's tolerance and your continued support. We are making a difference in these programs, and we are getting better. Thank you.
I spoke with Yvonne Newton down at the summer conference, and that's what you learned?
Yeah.
And that was the outcome?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, your comments? Also moved for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
The next one, there is going to be clarity when I read it because I had a conversation with Mr. Keener this morning from the Recorder's Office, so there was actually another contract in there that had another amount. So what we're going to do is approve and enter into Internet Service Agreement with Alltel Elyria at a total monthly cost of $603.64, which includes the local loop charge and Internet service fee. This contract is for five years and permits the Recorder to terminate the Internet contract for cause to be paid from account 218012401450105, utility account. So broken down is, the 250 is the monthly fee, and then there's 300 and some odd dollars is the local loop charge, so.
Once again, I received a letter from Mr. Smith on the standing that he was going to have some discussion, and he's asked, "Fist Behold." Have we gotten anything from him?
Mr. Smith said it was okay yesterday when I talked to him, and...
Okay, well, you said, "I hadn't heard that."
Oh.
Okay, so he's fine with this?
As far as I know.
Why wouldn't they be under our Internet service?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I understand the question.
Why wouldn't the Recorder? Is this part of our own, the countywide Internet service?
No, they have their own setup down there, and it's not unusual. Multiple different offices have procured different services other than what the Commissioners use. So it's not uncommon practice, and the Recorders have done a good job with what they've done. There was some issue that whether we could opt them in, I'm not really technically inclined in this area with our DS3, so we were just looking for some ability to maybe save them some money rather than dictating what they did. If Mr. Smith has had that discussion and everybody's fine with that, then, you know, I would urge the Board to...
He had come into my office yesterday and asked if it was on the agenda. I said, "Yes," he said, "Okay," so that was...
Well, again, I received a letter from him indicating that he was going to talk with them, and I have not received anything back from him to inform me of what the outcome was, and I don't believe he's available here right now. So if you've had that conversation, it satisfies my desire to make sure that we work together, you know, for economies. As long as you're on the record as saying it's, "Mr. Smith said it's fine," I'm great with that.
He said it was okay, so whatever mail came up to him, I don't know.
Okay that it's on the agenda, or okay to pass?
Now you re-climbed it. It's okay it's on the agenda, or is it okay to go ahead? I don't know. Again, I'm not, we have a great relationship with the Recorder's Office. We're not trying to interfere. We're just trying to save a little bit of money if we can. I have not had an update on this issue.
There's representatives from the Recorder's Office here. Do you want to ask them?
Well, my letter came from Mr. Smith.
I understand that, but they must have had a discussion with him.
I would prefer to talk to Mr. Smith.
How do you want to handle this?
Clerk, I believe the clerk has said that Mr. Smith said it was fine.
He did come into my office yesterday and said, you know, "If it was on the agenda." I said, "It says exactly what it was last week." He said, "Okay." Mr. Keener called me this morning because there is two contracts in here, though. So the total amount would be that. It wasn't, so that's the only conversation I had.
We have plenty to do in executive session. How about we just get a little clarification from Mr. Smith, and we can do it after our executive session. It's not a huge issue. And this way we can be satisfied that we've looked at the issue and everybody's on the same page, okay? Is that satisfactory to the Board?
I can do that.
That's fine.
Just don't let us forget to act on it after our executive session, Teresa, please. Since you happen to be the one who's being held responsible for this.
Fine. Mr. Cordes, County Administrator.
How's it feel?
I have no problem right now.
Wait a while.
Thank you, Commissioners. Once again, we want to meet the needs of the Recorder's Office. We just want to work to save a few dollars if we can. I have a couple of issues here pretty quick. As I, I think I sent an email around, or Mayor just informed whoever was here, we took a lightning strike on our tower out at 911, our backup PSAP, about a week and a half, two weeks ago. And we've been working on getting equipment and getting that fixed. Don't fear, we weren't down, but we did toast a bit of equipment out there, and we need to buy some equipment. I got this yesterday, and I'm asking that you approve the purchase of a few computers to replace the ones that suffered some damage. There's no sense filing an insurance claim because it's under our deductible with costs. What we want to do is, since we need to buy the new computers, we'll replace the computers at our main 911 center, and then we'll take the older ones and move them back to the backup PSAP. That's been a pretty standard practice for us. The computers were old anyway, this just gives us an excuse and an opportunity to upgrade them, but we were never down, we were never out of service, and, you know, we've been taking the necessary steps to stabilize the situation. Had it gotten much bigger, we would have pushed the panic button, but we just lost a little bit of equipment out there. And if you would pass a resolution approving that purchase, I would be appreciative.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Kikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
I also received this yesterday. We are trying to clarify the land out at the airport. They have been cooperative, the Board's been working with us, but they'll be, I think they would agree with us. They're having a hard time with all their titles and deeds and what they own and what they don't own, and they basically had a big box of stuff, and we're trying to reconcile it with land maps and titles, and some of the parcel numbers have changed, some of them don't even exist anymore. Mr. Ennis came in and he said, "I don't know what to do with this," and he dropped it on my desk because I said I would help him, and we tried to help him, and we became as confused as he was. We need some professional help with the land.
You're sure it's just the land?
I would give you an opportunity. We're requesting that you agree to...
I'm sorry.
I opened the door.
Yes, sir.
I am requesting that we hire a Lorain County title, I believe it's for $900...
$65.
$65 to have them assist us in trying to sort out all these titles, deeds, and paperwork so that we can get a better idea of the ownership of parcels and property lines out at the airport for part of our process of turning over assets. And, Mr. Ennis, you may want to add to that.
What Mr. Cordes said is basically correct. We've gone through all the paperwork with the airport. There's a need to kind of update that paperwork, the parcel numbers are kind of out of sync with the maps and the parcel numbers and the information from the auditors and Tax Maps Office. We've made several attempts to lay out a map and sit down and pinpoint all these spots, and we get through about six parcels, and then we run into an obstacle. So the only real, eventually, we're going to have to do deeds and everything, and we need to make sure that all our descriptions match up correctly, and the only way to be absolutely certain about that is to have a professional title company look at this.
That's probably something that should be done irrespective of who the owners slash operators of the airport are, right?
Absolutely, Commissioner. I was going to add that regardless of the long-term strategies and outcomes, this can only be good for the airport, the county, and the taxpayers here for this clarification, so it should be done.
Questions? Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski.
That concludes my request for this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant Attorney Prosecutor.
I have no other reports this morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioners' report.
Lori.
Well, Commissioner Blair and myself attended the Summer Conference down in Worcester this week, and it was an experience. And then Friday, we had a mock disaster down at 911, and it went off really well, and a lot of professional people, and they did a really good job, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Kayla.
No report this week.
First, I'd like to recognize Rebecca Gray from the Community Alliance. Rebecca, do you have any report?
Oh, not this morning, thank you.
Thank you for coming. As Lori mentioned, we were at the County Commissioners' Conference in Wayne County. Just to kind of close the loop on the local government fund issue, Senator Amstutz, who is the Senator in Wayne County area, was one of the speakers, and so we emailed, well, rather, Mr. Cordes emailed him a letter regarding our appreciation with respect to the budget because I believe he's one of the six members on that conference committee, if I'm not mistaken. And the other thing I want to say, and I see that Ann Molnar is in the audience, so when it comes time for public comment, I believe Ann's going to talk about the Rose Garden in Lorain, but I want to beat her to the punch. Well, there are some people with her. But I was treated to seeing the Rose Garden at the OARDC, which is a part of the Ohio State University, and they have a lovely rose garden there. So when I came back this morning, I talked to Charles Banky, who is with the Ag Center and who we support as part of our contribution, and Charles agreed to attend the meeting that Mayor Fulton is having today to talk about the Rose Garden, and he also said he would be happy to go out and look at the Rose Garden to see if there's any recommendations that he might have as, whatever his title is. He digs in the dirt stuff, kind of a guy. And so I thought that might be helpful to us, not to take over the mayor's project, not to be in charge of it, but as an assist, because this is Charles's, this is what he does, and this is expertise. So I just wanted to say that seeing that rose garden was beautiful. It was worth the trip. That, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner, before you go to public comment, I brought this thing out here two or three times and forgotten to give it to the Board. I don't want to forget again. As you know, you had your business profile done in Forbes, and I have a nice plaque here for you all. I have one.
Nice. We have to share, huh?
Well, we can play, you know, rock, paper, scissors. So, you know, like, I guess like the corner office, when there's only one, the county administrator gets it.
Uh-uh. Your picture isn't on there.
I'm glad it's not, but I'd like to present this to you. Maybe you can hold it out for the camera.
This is beautiful.
On your article that was going in Forbes Magazine.
I think we ought to...
Can I hang it right back here?
Yeah.
Behind us.
It was presented to us by Forbes. You know, you guys are shakers and movers there. It's a real nice plaque and...
Smile. You're uncandid, yeah!
I wish I could have gotten one for each one here for your office, but this is the only one where you received.
I don't think we need one for our office. I think we ought to put it up here, so will you take care of that?
I certainly will. Congratulations, Commissioners, and one last piece. Beginning Monday, your new Budget Director's sitting here, and you have a turnover going here. I believe Monday Shelley pretty much takes over as Budget Director. Ms. Roca's on his last week with us.
That's right.
We'll be addressing that next week, but I want to introduce Shelley Moreno. She's been...
Moreno.
Yeah. They call him all kinds of things in the paper.
Yes, he did. But, you know, Shelley and John are transitioning right now. I saw John trying to get his office cleaned out. I think he's going to be here in July just cleaning the office.
Yeah, I'm on my third barrel.
But just as an introduction publicly for Shelley, she's been a long-term employee. The Board supports, always supports advancement from the ranks, and congratulations, Shelley. We'll start seeing you in here every week now, beginning next week.
Just so long as you didn't say that John was on his last leg, I was afraid he was going to stay there.
Oh, yeah. I forgot my king.
Thank you, Mr. Cordes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I am convinced the reading of Board Correspondence be waived. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
End is 10:15, Teresa.
Yep.
According to my watch.
Um, I have some more paper.
Can't do public comment until after?
No. We have a public hearing today on the 15-feet alley vacation from, actually, Grace Avenue to Olive Avenue and between Rosewood and Elmwood Streets in Elyria Township. Proposed vacation is part of Burl and Day Track Lot 18. The petition was received on May 19, 2005, from Elyria Township trustees with signatures of 14 residents. Petition was then forwarded to the County Engineer for review, and by letter dated April 22nd, 2005, the Engineer filed a few corrections and legal description and provided the corrective copy. A notice to vacate was published in the Chronicle-Telegram on May 24th and 31st. Notices were sent to the Clerk of Elyria Township and the 14 property owners. The viewing was held on Wednesday, June 8, 2005, at 10:00 AM. Notices were also forwarded to public utilities such as Columbia Gas and ODNR. I received two responses. One was from All Telecommunications stating that they have telecommunication facilities within the area, and they will need to continue ongoing rights to maintain, operate, and upgrade its facilities as required to serve the area's customers. Also to Ohio Edison, there is existing overhead distribution line in the section of the alleyway, and they need a permanent easement per Ohio Revised Code 723.041 to have reasonable ingress and egress access upon, over, and across said right-of-way to maintain the lines and remove or trim trees, limbs, and underbrush that may interfere with the safe operation of these lines. And I see Wayne Malletti was here, and I don't know if there's any residents, but...
Okay, you're done? All right. Is there anybody in the, I was making a note, I'm sorry. Is there anybody who wishes to give testimony to the Commissioners on this matter? If so, would you please stand and be sworn in? Ah, there he is.
This is where the statements you shall give shall be the proof that you would tell answer of God or under penalty of law perjury.
Thank you, jury. Mr. Malletti, for the Engineer's Office, would you offer us comments, please?
Wayne Malletti, County Engineer's Office. Commissioner Blair, myself viewed this on June 8th at 10:00. It's an alley between Elmwood and Rosewood Street, and it extends from Grace Avenue, which runs north and south, to Olive. We did notice that there were power poles and telephone poles in the area. So I crossed this before, and now I have easements, permanent easements, after the land's vacated by law, so I have the description follows the map correctly, and so we really don't have any further comments.
Thank you very much.
Aye, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience, property owners, or anyone else who would like to make a comment on this matter? If not, I would like to move for the vacation as outlined with necessary easements slash ongoing rights being maintained as outlined by Mr. Malletti. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public hearing, and now we will move to public comment. Thank you, Teresa. Anyone wishing to make a comment? Come to the microphone and state your name, please.
Good morning, David.
Good morning, sir. I thought you guys were going to talk about the Rose Garden. Thought I was going to talk after the Rose Garden.
We'll give you a rose, how's that?
Thanks. David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. Excuse me. I'm up here today with my Juneteenth tee-shirt to begin the advertising for Juneteenth, 2006. Juneteenth, 2005, in Oberlin was over this past weekend. We, as I understand it, had more than 4,000 people for various events between Thursday and Saturday. I didn't see all of the people who were there because I spent a lot of my time either pinned down in one spot or behind a curtain or, you know, behind a scene somewhere, but it certainly was bigger and better than ever. I want to tell you a couple of things that are in a report that's not yet issued about this, that while visiting relatives in Elyria, a member of the National Juneteenth Observance Foundation Board of Directors learned of Oberlin's Juneteenth Festival and joined us on Saturday afternoon. She was very impressed with Oberlin's festival and was amazed to learn that it had started on Thursday. She was also surprised to learn that the Oberlin City Council had passed a resolution officially recognizing Juneteenth. She asked for and received a copy of the resolution to share with other members of the Foundation Board. Another of her observations was that Oberlin's Juneteenth celebration was much more multicultural than any other she had attended. She said that Oberlin should be used as an example for other cities, and while I support that, I also observed that if everybody comes to have a good one, nobody will come to ours. If everyone had their own Tournament of Roses parade, Pasadena would be quiet and our TVs would be off on New Year's morning. So I hope we're a model for cities somewhat farther away. I wanted to bring this up partly because I noticed you put the, under appointments, I wanted to bring this up partly because I noticed you put the, under appointments, the invitation from Main Street Elyria to honor the old post office, St. Andrew's Episcopal Church, and the Historic City Hall with their being placed on the National Register of Historic Places, so I expect you all to adjourn from your, or to recess from your executive session to go over there. That's why it's here as an appointment, I assume.
That was my plan.
That's a very good plan, and I want to support that. And just two other quick things. The National Park Service has a National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. Westwood Cemetery in Oberlin is a site on that. The Oberlin Historic and Improvement Organization is a facility on that, and Loraine County Visitors Bureau's Network to Freedom program is a program on that. The Oberlin Wellington Rescue Monument in Martin Luther King Junior Park in Oberlin has now been added as a site. I know we're the only county in Ohio with one in each of the three categories the National Park Service has for this network, a site, a program, and a facility. I think we're the only county in the country with that distinction, and we're going to have more on this network over the next few years. I just wanted to express an opinion, a hope, and a vague proposal in the presence of the Commissioners, County Administrator, even though he isn't here right now, the Community Development Director, and the Community Alliance staff, that appropriate resources, policy development, and strategic thinking should be devoted to tourism, and in Loraine County, to historic preservation and heritage tourism in particular, in no way as a substitute for manufacturing and tax abatements and that part of economic development as an economic engine, but as an important element of economic diversity and development, as well as a quality of life and environmental issue here in Loraine County. So, Juneteenth 2006, I have a feeling I know what the theme is, but I would really be stealing a march on other people if I said what it is, but I hope I see you all down there next year, and I hope I get a little more time not quite so far behind the scenes as I was for part of it this weekend. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments, David.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Aaron from Loraine, retired physician. I have been living in Loraine for forty years. I never seen our Rose Garden in Lakeview Park so bad. We need your help to restore them, and I can do what I can as a volunteer in my capacity to restore that Rose Garden. Also, I invite all Commissioners to my greenhouse, which is in Amherst, and also, this is a nonprofit organization, and I have been working the last 20, 25 years to build a botanical garden for the Loraine County, and you see that, and what I have been doing for the last many years, and please, when you have time, please come to see my greenhouse too, and then help the Rose Garden to restore. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aaron.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Dan Bilman, did you want to make any comments?
Me.
If you want to, if you choose not to, that's fine.
Good morning, Dan Bilman, Solid Waste Director for Loraine County Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I guess the Rose Garden's getting kind of contentious as far as an issue is involved.
Just popular.
If, in fact, Mr. Cordez would like me to continue. Through the community grant process, you Commissioners have given the City of Loraine permission to use about $161,000, not only for the Rose Garden issue, but for other recycled products in the City of Loraine. In looking at their schedule, it looks like probably they can put about $60,000 of recycled dollars into the Rose Garden. Those items may include concrete, recycled concrete walkways, which are very sorely needed, park benches, mulch, and also light poles. I've had some preliminary discussions with Craig Miller on this and other individuals like Ann Molnar, so I hope this project starts going very shortly, because the park is in fairly rundown condition, really rundown, I should say. We have tried to help the situation a little bit with getting community service people over there through the courts of Loraine County, and some of the Girl Scout troops, I guess, are over there pulling weeds and trying to make it better. Hopefully, the City of Loraine will move forward on this fairly shortly. As you know, in previous years, the Commissioners have given quite a large sum of money for improvements over there, so again, you've stepped up to the plate and given them the funding to do these items in the Rose Garden, hopefully that they will, in fact, move forward on it.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Commissioners, I met with the city last year, and we had quite extensive discussions on that, and to reiterate what Mr. Bilman said, the then Board at that point was favorably inclined to work with the solid waste funds to assist them at the Rose Garden. I'm not sure why the project never moved forward, but the way we left it after those meetings was that their Community Development Department was supposed to work with Mr. Bilman on what could or could not be procured under solid waste grant monies to support the project up on the lake. And I'm glad to see that it's being revisited, but I don't believe that any initiative occurred with your department subsequent to those meetings, did it?
Not last year and not so far this year.
Okay. So you're already involved, you're already supporting the project, and I know that was a prior Board's decision through solid waste, and I would encourage this Board to be as supportive of that project, and it's just an update for your own notification. Thank you.
Questions, your comments?
No, it just really needs a cleanup, not a, Dan, I was there Tuesday night, my daughters play beach volleyball there on Tuesday nights in a league, and it's in bad shape, and I've grown, I grew up in that area, spent a lot of time at Lakeview Park, it really means help, so whatever we can cooperatively do with the City of Loraine would be a nice thing to clean up Lakeview Park.
The Commissioners have always been very eager to help with those kind of projects, and through Solid Waste Department and through efforts with litter control, we have secured a lot of community service people to help in that effort, so I hope Loraine accepts it and continues to move forward on it.
Thank you, Dan.
But again, you know, I thank the Commissioners for helping the Solid Waste Department move on this, on these issues, so thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no takers, I move that we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator to break, so the Commissioners can go at 11 o'clock for the hysterical functions. Thanks, Lori.
You can stay here if you want.
Ready, Blair, get one each person.
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Loraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Every year in Loraine County, hundreds of children are abused and neglected. Many are removed from their homes for their protection. Judges must decide their futures, but they need information to make these critical decisions. You can provide this information through Voices for Children. Volunteers are men and women from all walks of life with no special or legal background who work alongside attorneys, social workers, and other court employees. As an officer of the court, you find out as much as you can about the child. You will review records, interview parents and relatives, foster parents, talk to teachers, neighbors, and most importantly, the child. When the volunteer has a complete profile, he or she appears in court to recommend what is best for the child's future. You've heard the statistics on child abuse, now is your chance to do something about it. You don't need any special qualifications, only the desire to protect local children who desperately need your help. To become a special advocate or for more information on our next training session, call Voices for Children today.